Thank you. Okay.
Lori, I don't know if you can possibly help Steve Fan. It sounds like he's got the wrong link for the meeting. He says, let me see.
They sent us, Paige, they sent us two different links today. One of them's for the 18th and the other one's for tonight. So you need to get on the other one.
I only, I only invited everybody to tonight, so let me resend his link.
There was another for 18th. I got on it first.
I don't know who sent that one because I wait till like the day of or the day before.
Planning sent it, I think.
Jimmy, is my, is my lighting okay? Because these are all.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're fine now, Sean.
Okay.
Okay, let Steve Fan know I'm rescinding his.
Don Bandi.
Invite.
So we are live on Facebook. We're not, we're going to attempt to go live on the website and on cable, but doesn't look promising, but we'll keep trying.
Good, because Daddy said he was going to have to watch Mountain Men if we're not on TV.
Are we ready? Go ahead and start.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pardon the government's executive order number 16, number 34, number 51, number 60, and number 65. In the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the November 10, 2020, Galton Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Galton. Join Zoom meeting at HTTPS slash slash US O2 web dash zoom dash US slash I slash eight four seven three five eight three five eight three one. Or you can dial the number one four seven oh two five oh nine three five eight R one four seven oh three eight one two five five two and enter webinar ID eight four seven three five eight three five eight three one. Are we ready to vote on to have this Zoom meeting?
I move that we have this electronic meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been a motion made by Ms. Love, the second by Mr. Overton. Ms. Kitterell, will you please call the roll to have the Zoom meeting?
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan. Is he not here tonight? I don't know. I haven't seen him.
He's trying to get logged in.
Oh, okay. Councilman Fennel.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fan, I mean Vice Mayor Camp, sorry.
Yes.
And Councilman Fan. He must still not be on, so we have six eyes and zero no's and one no vote.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kitterell. Now we'll have a roll call at this time.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Yay. Councilman Fennel.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. This time we'll have approval amendments for October 13, 2020, council work session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Love, second by Mr. Overton. Any question, correction, or comments? This time, all in favor of approval amendment, let it be known by saying aye. I'm sorry. Roll call, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennel.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero noes.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. This time we will call for public recognition. Jeff, do we have anyone?
Let me remind everyone, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. We've got a couple of people who've already used that. We'll call you out shortly. If you join us using your cell phone, you will do star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Once I call your name, you'll have to unmute yourself, but I'll free you up for that. Frank Marchese, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Frank Marchese, I've been in Harris Lane. We just want to thank the police department for doing traffic examination on our street. You had a lot of good information as far as speeding and non-speeding goes. I guess I'm just walking down the street at the wrong time. I do still want to bring to the council's attention the pork chop in the road. We do have tractor trailers going out of the left side of the pork chop to make an illegal left-hand turn out to Harris Lane. Because they're cutting through Harris Lane as a shortcut. I still don't want to give up looking at that because it is a dangerous situation. I also want to bring to your attention the blasting currently at Kensington Downs. We're getting stronger and stronger blasts around here. Our complaints to the state go unfounded. A lot of the neighbors are complaining about their houses rocking and, and cracks and creaks. It's not houses settling. It's not an insurance claim that has to be made. Just, I don't know what the farm marshal could do, if he could do anything to monitor it more closely, but yesterday I heard one go off. I heard the blast. Then I heard what sounded like falling debris. I couldn't see it because I was upstairs in one of my other rooms. But it was very loud and very shaking through the whole house. So I just want to bring that to your attention. If there's anything we can do, of course, I continue to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franny.
All right, Mark Schmidt is next. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mark Schmidt. I live at 1011 Peninsula Drive. First, I would like to thank the Mayor Brown for allowing me to speak, as well as the city council members for allowing me to speak this evening. I have just one little short comment to make. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned some things about the park at Lock Four and I, some changes or improvements that could be, could be made. And I was out there last week, late last week, and I just wanted to thank Mr. David Brown for his addressing a couple of those. We have nice seats for the fishermen on the pier and they've got to put some, some rock compound down at the turnaround out there on the very end of the park that allows for better parking. So thank you, Mr. Brown, for all your, all your help. That's, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tina Vincent, go ahead. Vincent, you'll still have to unmute yourself. If you mouse, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name's Tina Vincent. I'm from Hendersonville. I'm an attorney and administrator for the estates of Nancy Banks and Jeannie Banks-Puller. Nancy died owning the property on Main Street that has been deemed a dangerous building and is scheduled for demolition. The estate has no interest in the property. The property vested in two heirs. I do not represent the heirs. My role here is just to strictly facilitate the sale of the property before it's demolished. Both heirs are now finally in agreement to sell the property. I'm requesting a 30-day delay in demolishing the property in order to get it sold. I have three serious offers on the property. Attorney Philip Kelly is handling the closing. I request that this matter be put on the agenda for a vote on your next meeting on November 17th at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Let's see, we do have an additional caller. If you didn't hear earlier, if you hit star nine, that enabled you to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. And last chance for anyone else who would like to raise their hand and speak. Okay, that's, appears to be everyone.
Okay, thank you, dear. No other public recognition. This time we have comments from Paige Brown.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I want to say congratulations to our two council members who were reelected last week. Of course, Councilwoman Love and Councilman Fennel. And congratulations too to Alene George, who is, will be our new council representative being sworn in in January. We certainly welcome you guys back and welcome her in January. Want to mention that tomorrow is Veterans Day. I hope that we all enjoy the day and celebrate our veterans and take a moment to be thankful for their service for our freedom. I think we in our community certainly do communicate how much we value our servicemen and women. Probably more than they do in a lot of places in our country, but we're fortunate in that. But certainly on, on behalf of the city, I do want to say to any of our veterans who may be watching, thank you. We appreciate you. We love you. And tomorrow is all about you. Also want to mention that last Saturday, there was a Veterans Day parade honoring the veterans. This was put on the, put on by the American Legion Post 17. Well done, as always. Lots of great participation, lots of wonderful cars and music, and it was a really good parade. And lots of people turning out to watch it, which made me really happy to see. This weekend is the Tinsel and Treasure, Treasures Holiday Open House, the annual event where local merchants open their doors to kind of kick off the holiday season here in Galton. That's generally Saturday and Sunday. Galton Chamber will have all kinds of information about who's participating and any special events that may be associated with that. Their website is galton tn.org. And you can find out more information there if you like, and certainly at any participating merchants, you can learn more. Finally, I do want to say, tonight's meeting, we did have technical difficulties, as we do sometimes with this new tech, not new technology, new to us, technology still. We, at the start of the meeting, were not on our website or on Cable Channel 19. We are streaming on Facebook and the meeting will be posted to our website tomorrow, but in case you happen to bump into anyone that's looking for the meeting, you can tell them to tune into the Zoom meeting or tune into us on Facebook for the next little bit while we're actually meeting. And I think that is all for right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we go on to the agenda. Item number one, ordinance number O2011-50, appropriating insurance recovery in the amount of $8,775 for the replacement of a street department Chevrolet Colorado. Mr. Wickerson.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this, like you said, this ordinance is just to appropriate some insurance recovery funds from some damage to a vehicle on our gate at the public records facility.
Motion moved to council.
Second.
Been a motion made by Mr. Overton, second by, uh, who, Sean Fennel?
Yes.
Sean Fennel. Any question? Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please, Ms. Kitterell.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennel.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero noes.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. Item number two, Economic Development Agency Strategic Plan, Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. As you know, over the last year or two, this city has really been successful in attracting companies and had some, some marquee successes. What I'm pleased to introduce tonight is our chairman of the board, Ms. Jeannie Gregory, who's going to talk to you about what went into that process and what we're looking forward to doing in the future. So Jeannie Gregory, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay, everyone? Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening. When city council approved Galton's strategic plan in 2018, goal number two of the city's plan was to have a resilient and diversified economy. This includes expanded workforce training partnerships, build up from the current economic base, improve transportation and community infrastructure, market state routes 386 and state routes 109 corridors as major employment centers, and actively prepare sites for future employment growth. Shortly after the council adopted the strategic plan, the EDA board, along with the Industrial Development Board, held a workshop to develop our strategic plan specific to EDA. I'm here to share year three of the EDA strategic plan, but before I do that, let me give you an update on years one and two and how they focused on your goal of a resilient and diversified economy. Part of our 2018-2019 plan was to focus on technology companies, specifically data centers, as well as advanced manufacturing and corporate offices. Today, we have two data centers under construction, Archer Data Centers and Facebook. We also have new advanced manufacturing with the location of DNS Industries here. And three companies have moved their headquarters here, PCA, The Wood Group, and Appalachian Pipeline. Other parts of our 2018-2019 plan were to grow existing industries and expand the workforce training partnerships.
I think we lost the voice.
Several, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Several of our existing industries have expanded, most notably Gap, which has added hundreds of jobs over the last three years. We cemented a relationship, partnership between Volunteer State Community College and Greater Nashville Technology Council to provide expedited IT training in Galton. And we've grown our partnerships with Sumner County School System and their CTA program. So for 2019-2020, we again held a workshop with the IDB and approved three other goals. Purchase more land, tell our story better, and develop the workforce. So let's first talk about land. We have 30 acres of city-owned land left in the industrial center and it's under option for purchase. James has been working with various partners on possibilities for land, both industrial options and for corporate office. As for the workforce, pre-COVID, our unemployment rate was below 3%. But as you know, in March and April of 2020, it shot up to above 14%. It's currently back down to about 5%. EDA's focus during the pandemic was to help our existing industries manage the pandemic and preserve their workforce. All our industries are back up to pre-COVID work, and some are doing even better than pre-COVID. We have anywhere from 400 to 500 job, job openings in our industrial and distribution sectors, which we promote on social media. And speaking of social media, it's our, it is one of our areas to beef up and to meet our goal of telling our story better. The staff is consistently posting on Facebook, LinkedIn, and Instagram. We're trying to become more focused on our target audience, but quite honestly, the backend ad parts of social media take a lot of time and attention, which is why the board feels strongly that the EDA should hire someone to assist with social media targeting. Not an additional employee, but a firm or a person as a consultant to help us currently and upfront with our target audience. That brings us to our 2020-2021 strategic plan for EDA, which is going to sound very familiar. Acquire land for future development, more specifically for headquarters and corporate offices along the waterfront, major roads, and in the downtown. Tell our story better, develop our workforce, and support existing industries. While the goals may be the same as last year, the specifics have shifted, in part because of the pandemic, but mostly because of our phenomenal success despite the pandemic. EDA's work has not slowed because of the virus. In fact, it's grown exponentially, in great part because of the Facebook announcement, but also because of our care for the existing industries. This year, the annual manufacturing day grew to manufacturing month. The EDA staff, along with help from Jeff Hinchell and the mayor's office, created 20 new videos of about our companies and workforce. In lieu of our annual luncheon, the staff delivered 80 gift boxes full of local products to our existing industries. Meeting with them in person is invaluable in building the relationships and understanding their needs, and EDA will continue developing those personal relationships. The staff also continues to bring local industry together with both Ball State and area high schools, in some cases, helping to create company-specific training needs. Our partnership with Facebook is already reaping community benefits. Katie Comer, who is Facebook's Southeast Regional Community Development Manager, has met with Ball State, Sumner County Schools, the Chamber of Commerce, and others to discuss their needs. One of Facebook's first commitments is to create a 120 acres of pollinator fields on their site, which has both educational and environmental impact. The EDA board again feels strongly that the EDA must find a marketing specialist, a person or firm, to show we are maximizing the huge opportunity that Facebook gives us. One of our goals for future development is corporate headquarters. To reach those decision-makers, we need a partnership with someone who can help us hone our message and our media outreach. Pursuing corporate headquarters does not mean we're abandoning industrial prospects. We're still pursuing those as well, but now required that the companies have entry-level pay of $20 per hour and no more than 200 employees. This helps protect our existing industries and achieves our goal of elevating the pay rates in Galton. EDA continues discussions with developers about land for corporate headquarters and high-tech, low-impact industrial. We'll focus more on options in and around the downtown area, and we will pursue public-private partnerships. Overall, in less than three years, under our strategic plans, that Galton EDA has generated nearly 3,200 new jobs and more than $1 billion in capital expenditures. Our total of new industries and expansions in that time is more than 20. Galton is the envy of many economic development agencies across the state. This is credit to not only the staff, but also a huge credit to proactive policies and approach of the mayor and city council. Many communities would simply rest on their laurels after announcing a, a big announcement like a company like Facebook. Instead, for us, Facebook propels us to a new arena for even better-paying jobs. EDA's work will not slow. I speak for the entire EDA board and staff when I say thank you for all of your support. We should all be very proud of Galton and very excited for its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Any question or comments?
Great news and great job, Gaynor.
If I may, to have the support of that group of people has been invaluable. As was obvious with her presentation, the city is, is doing an incredible job. I just want to interject that I will be coming to the city council in the future to ask for funds to secure land. If you remember phase two of the industrial center, where Beretta, Archer Data Centers, you know, DNS Industries, American Colors, all located. That was land that was purchased by the city and allowed us to go out there. And we will have paid back the investment that we made easily, but it's incredibly important for the, a community to have those lands under control. So I will be coming to you. We have two or three opportunities out there. And I am hopeful that there will be a support for continuing a purchase of land that will allow us to make these kind of investments and, and growth in the future. But thank you, Ms. Gregory. I appreciate your report this evening. And for the council, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Any other comments from any of the council members? We'll go to item number three, Enbridge Letter Regarding Gas Pipeline on the Gateway Drive Extension Property. Ms. Bates.
Hey, this is Rosemary Bates, and one of my jobs for the city of Galton is Special Projects Director, and I'm helping manage the construction of the Gateway Drive Extension from the end where the cul-de-sac is, south to Highway 25. We have known all along that Enbridge has an East Tennessee gas line running through the property basically perpendicular to where the road is going. Enbridge has been great to work with in terms of how to build the road over their pipeline and, and work with them in a way that meets their requirements and our needs. They did send us a letter of no objection that they want the city to sign. And like with all agreements, we send these to the city attorney's office and they, if they have no objections, then they usually just sign it and then the mayor can sign it. Sometimes they'll have some minor markups that they initial on the mayor initials. In this particular situation, there is at least one paragraph. And in your packet, you should have the agreement, and it is paragraph 15, where the city attorney has indicated she cannot recommend the city accept this paragraph, but that council must approve if you want to move forward with the agreement. Additionally, we had the pre-construction meeting yesterday for this project. There were representatives of Enbridge there who asked that I send them the markups from the city attorney to see if their attorneys would rework the agreement or possibly change it to incorporate the city attorney's comments. I don't know that that can happen. They did not know if that could happen. They were going to make an effort. But as of today, the agreement that we have is the one that's in your packet. And at this point, I will let Susan High McCauley, our city attorney, tell you why that particular paragraph would cause challenges.
Yeah, so if you would look at the contract that's in your packet, there are actually two paragraphs, markups on paragraph 15 is the most concerning. Paragraph 15 basically states that if we sign off on this contract, that we are going to certify that Enbridge will have no liability. If you look right there in the very first part of that paragraph, that if they interfere with or damage or destroy, destroy all or part of the activities, then we release them from all liability. That includes attorney's fees, damages. It lists a number of different kinds of damages. As your attorney, I cannot recommend that we sign off on the contract in this form. I will be glad to speak with Enbridge's attorney to see if we can work out some different language, but I do not recommend that. The other issue is in paragraph 13. I think that we could easily get that one resolved. That deals with insurance that are requiring insurance and amounts that we do not have. But typically, what we are able to do is to require our contractors that do the work for us to have that type of contract, and that usually satisfies that requirement. So I think we, we will be able to work that one out. I'm not certain about paragraph 15.
Any comments, statement from any of the council members? What's the will of the body?
I think Susan needs to talk to him and, and discuss.
I don't, I don't want to vote on it until Susan feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, I agree.
All the councilmen agree with that. Let Ms. McCauley handle it. Is that what I'm hearing everybody saying?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
We're going to, thank you, Miss Spacy. We're going to item number four, Resolution Number R2011-62, Seeking Membership in AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. Mayor Paige Brown.
Yes, this is a resolution asking for the council to approve the joining of the city into the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Cities. The AARP has a program whereby they promote cities being more livable for groups of all ages. Of course, their, their focus is towards an older generation, but we believe in that being a part of this network that we can, they can help us set benchmarks so that we become more age-friendly for that sector of our population. As you know, we have had a senior committee in place for several years now. We've been meeting. We've been doing lots of things, examining lots of issues in our community. We've done a senior guide, a resource guide. And we feel like that this is the next step toward really doing, taking some, some concrete steps towards improving, improving certain accesses and certain amenities and certain opportunities for seniors in our community. And so part of us joining this does require this resolution from the council, and so that's why we're requesting it. I'd love to answer any questions for you about it.
There are costs?
There's not a cost.
So, sounds good.
Now, there may be costs as we go down the road and try to do some of these things, but of course, we'll deal with those then.
There's not any cost for the membership.
No.
Motion.
Is there been a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes? Any other comments or question? This time we'll have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennel.
Yes.
Councilman. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kitter. Item number six, our monthly financial report for September. Ms. Nichols.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The September financial reports are included in your packet. As you can see in the general fund, we're spending more than we're collecting at the moment. But that's our normal trend for this time of year. Not to take away from any of Ms. Kitterell's glory, but we did get our tax bills. And we have started collecting some tax revenue. So November will look better than current. But no concerns over the financial reports. If anybody has questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thanks, Rachel.
Any council member have any question about Ms. Nichols about the monthly September financial report? If not, we'll move on to item number six, Resolution Number R two zero one one dash six three to approve Omni Partners as a purchasing cooperative under the city purchasing procedure. Ms. Nichols again.
Yes, sir. As part of our purchasing policy, anytime we want to join a cooperative purchasing organization, council has to approve that for us. The Omnia Partners has a good pricing for some I T equipment that we're wanting to buy. And we would like to join this cooperative to be able to get that.
Motion approved.
Been a motion by Mr. Overton. Second by Ms. Love. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero nays.
Thank you.
Ms. Kitter. Item number seven, Resolution R two zero one one dash six four. Accepting public improvements by the seat of Gallatin, Tennessee, Saint Blaze Retreat, Section Three, Mr. Tuttle.
Yes, this is Lance White, former utility manager for Nick Tuttle. This is a street acceptance, presumed acceptance.
Motion to send it on.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. Any question or comments? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero nays.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number eight, Order Number O two zero one one dash four nine. Amendment to the Zone Orders in Article twelve point zero zero, supplementary District Regulation, Section twelve dash zero one, Regulation applicable in all Districts in Article thirteen point zero zero, Performance and Design Standards, Section thirteen point zero eight, Agricultural and Compatibility Standard. Mr. McCall. Bill McCall.
Yes, Council. Yes, Council, this is a item that was discussed previously in October at a work session briefly. It is a request to amend our zoning code to change the architectural provisions in Article thirteen, Section thirteen oh eight, and also to amend Article twelve, Section twelve point oh one supplementary district regulations. Section twelve amends the accessory structure requirements. And Article thirteen is focused on architectural provisions. Back in this, I think it was February, I believe it was, or March, the planning commission had requested that the mayor point a committee to discuss and to study the architectural provisions in our code. And that committee was formed in late May and met throughout the summer at several meetings. And after the last meeting, they voted to recommend these changes that are provided in the draft ordinance. This was also forwarded to the planning commission, and the planning commission recommended approval of this draft ordinance. The ordinance did not make a lot of wholesale changes to address specifics about detailed designs of architecture in certain districts or accessory structure architecture. But they did clarify some language in the ordinance to ensure that the compatibility provisions do not necessarily apply in certain residential zoning districts for the most part and cert cup, the couple of industrial zoning districts that we have. So you have that draft ordinance there. The language that is added is shown as underlying language and the language that is stricken is shown as a strikeout. So it's not really that significant from the code that we had before. We specifically identified those districts which are considered accepted from the compatibility provisions. That means that most of the newer districts that we have, including those that require master plan, the compatibility provisions do apply, but they do not apply in some of the older traditional residential neighborhoods for the most part. The accessibility or accessory structure section of the code was also amended a little bit. And it created a two-tier system for accessory structures, those that require permit and those that do not require permit. Buildings over two hundred square feet require permit. And the planning commission and the architectural advisory committee recommended that those structures meet the required building setbacks the same as it would for a primary structure on a lot. Whereas smaller structures, what you might, you consider your utility sheds that you put your lawn mowers in, things like that, which are generally less than two hundred square feet, would not have to meet those except extraordinary setbacks and would be allowed to retain the setbacks of four feet from property boundaries, provided that they do not encroach into a a utility easement, utility or drainage easement. Just a little background, we don't allow accessory structures to be built in the front yards on residential lots. We do allow them in the front yards of industrial lots. And we don't have any specific regulations that require any accessory structure built on these accepted zoning districts to match the architecture of the house on the lots. But we don't allow accessory structures to be built without a house being built on a lot, except for agricultural zones, things like barns and so forth. So what we've had occur since our last meeting is that we've received a chart, and that's included in your agenda package from a resident in town who went and reviewed some other middle Tennessee zoning codes to apply in a tabular form, some information of various design criteria. And mostly these are for accessory structures only. So our architectural provisions and apply to all types of structures, not just accessory structures. But this, the focus of this little report here and summary table was primarily for accessory structures. And communities across middle Tennessee have a variety of standards that they apply. None of them are exactly the same. They're all a little bit different. We do have some compatibility provisions in our code, although it was not listed in this chart. And we do have limits on size of accessory structures. When, in those accepted zoning districts that are identified in the ordinance now, as well as in the draft ordinance, there's limitations on sizes of structures that can be built. So you can only cover so much of the lot. And if what we have changed in our code two, three years ago was that we added a short sentence that restricted any accessory structure had to be no larger than the primary structure. And that the combination of any structures, your primary structure, let's say your house, and one or more accessory structures couldn't exceed the lot coverage permitted by the zoning district. So that limits the size of the accessory structures in itself because you could either have a very large house that covers a large portion of the lot or smaller buildings. So there's some flexibility there that allows for a larger accessory structure. If you have a smaller home or a smaller accessory structure, if you have a large footprint home. There is no height restrictions in most of our traditional old zoning districts. We don't typically have structures in the older zoning districts that exceed maybe two stories. Maybe there's a few three stories. Other buildings such as public institutions or churches might have a building size which that exceeds what normally you would find in a residential district, particularly with steeples, but there's exceptions to things like that. So we don't have a height restriction. And that also applies not only to a primary structure such as a house, but an accessory structure as well. As I mentioned before, accessory structures have to be located in a rear yard, except for industrial districts. And of course, meet the setbacks. And of course, one of those changes that the planning commission recommended through the architectural advisory committee is those accessory structures larger than two hundred square feet meet the setback of a primary structure. So those are some of the limitations that we have. There are different lot coverages. Basically, it's usually twenty percent of the lot, depending on what the zoning is. So those are some of the compatibility standards that we have that are already built into the zoning code. Now, I'm going to share my screen here. Hit the right button. And can, is that showing up on the screen?
Yes.
This is the chart that was provided by a local citizen, and this is the comparison with other communities in middle Tennessee that address, again, regulations on accessory structures only. So you can see some of this comparison. Again, there's no height limitations in most of the, in certain zoning districts. You see what Hendersonville has. They have a system set up whereby accessory structures are limited, not necessarily by lot coverage that is provided for in our code, but based on the size of the lot and or the size of the house. I'm not sure if it's fifty percent of the house or twelve hundreds, the greater of the two or not. It's unclear from this information. So we have information from Goodlettsville, Franklin, Brentwood, Germantown, which is of course over near Memphis, has some standards, Call Your Real, getting over near Memphis, and Mount Juliet, Lebanon. Many of them have this two-tiered system of building size limitations that they have. And you see Knowlesville has a height limitation as well. We have Smyrna and then of course Murfreesboro. So that's the chart that was provided to us. I know it's a lot of information to present. So hopefully you've had a chance to skim through that and you might have some questions. Also, I have some photographs that I would like to share with you if I could. So let me minimize that. All those photographs up. These are photographs that were taken. And let me, do you, can you see those?
No.
No.
It does not show.
Now, you still got your
You may have to unshow your one screen and then go back and reshare and reselect a different source.
Yeah, okay. How about that?
Yes.
That works. Okay. Now, I want to emphasize that this really is a focus primarily just on accessory structures and not all architecture, although you might be able to see some differences between adjacent properties. Because Section B, even though it's accepted in most zoning districts, Section B of Article thirteen, Section thirteen oh eight provides for compatibility with adjacent and area properties. But these are in the, mostly in the R twenty zoning district, and I just selected some of these. I think all but maybe a couple of are in the R twenty zoning district. But which requires a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. So here's a house, at this time, this house was being renovated. And it has, you can't really see it from this, but it has quite a large or sizable accessory structure in the back. Here we see a three-car garage behind this house, and then they got another accessory structure that well, pretty much covers the back, the whole backyard. Oh, went too fast. Okay, and here's another one. It's almost, it's right across the street practically. See, have an accessory garage that's built of materials, has a gabled roof and our shed type roof and two garage doors. And you can see the architecture of the house. The house has brick around the chimneys and stuff, but no brick on the
Fish equation. Those two you just showed us, are they not, they not compatible to the house? To each house? Do you not think so?
Well, the materials here on this house are brick up, up. The top part is, looks like to be some sort of boarding material that's vertical. And it's unclear as to what that material in the back is.
But to me, it looks compatible.
Would be, and the roof line might be, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it looks compatible. So does that. Yeah.
But if you didn't have a height requirement, what if that building right there we're looking at now was twice as high, it wouldn't look compatible.
Right.
Right.
But it, but it's, it's compatible and it's probably the height. I mean, if you had a height restriction, it probably would meet that, depending on what you went with. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
And then this is another one in the same neighborhood. In this case, it's a, I think it's a pool house, and I'm not sure what else they have there, but
It's a pool house, yes.
And it has a brick stone on it and so forth. This is another home, right? Again, all these are pretty much in the same neighborhood. It's unclear. This one appears to have a shingled roof on it with, looks like vertical boarding. And this back three-car garage has a metal roof with metal siding on it and white doors. And this is colored, kind of a beige colored house where the white doors and the white roof and I guess a beige colored metal panels. This one's another one with a, in the same, again, same neighborhood. The bricks seem to match. The roof lot, roof structure's different though. So the roof structure here, you got this different type of roof, hip type roof where they have this gable type roof here. So, and the shingles are a little darker on the house than they are on the accessory structure. So here's another one. This is quite a sizable accessory structure. I'm not sure exactly what it's used for, but
Like a house behind a house.
Yeah, sort of does, doesn't it?
That's a, that's a pool house.
Okay.
They've got a, as a matter of fact, that section has a homeowner association too. They got, they got approved by the homeowner association.
So they got a different roof structure here too as well, a little bit different. Here's the other side of the first house that we saw, and you can see that garage and accessory structure quite, quite large. And it extends really across the whole back of the property. You remember, you saw the others, the other side of the house. So essentially, this accessory structure is very large and extends all the way across the whole backside of the lot. This is another house that appears to have a similar roof structure and materials, at least on the bottom portion is the top portion of the house. This is an older building, I think may have pre-existed as a farm, a survivor of whatever farm used to be in this area.
It was a racket ball court. Yeah.
Yeah, or maybe it was built similar to when the neighborhood was built, but
It was built way before the neighborhood was, yeah.
Yeah, but it's much larger than any of the houses in, in the area for an accessory structure. And then we have things like these small sheds, you know, the smaller tin sheds or wood sheds and so forth that don't match the architecture of the houses. Sometimes they have multiple sheds on a priest's property, a brick home or so. These, of course, have, and then we have another situation here with a metal shed, two-car garage, kind of sizable in comparison to the house. Kind of hard to see this one, but kind of the same thing back here behind this house. Again, siding boards here with a brick house. You know, this has been occurring like this all over town. I just selected these particular areas because of the zoning that they had was R twenty. But you can see the size of these structures. Some of them match the house, some don't always. Or the roof lines of the structures like that one there. And kind of hard to tell that one there, but a little bit, you know, the roofs, the roof design and so forth. And kind of hard to tell that one there, but a little bit, you know, the roofs, the roof design and so forth, the house is much different than the, the primary structure. That's not very good shot there, the trees in the way. This is one on Nichols Lane, it's a nice big house and with a metal roof, but you got a large, very large storage building behind there and you have quite a few of those on Nichols Lane that are in R40 zone, not R20. And that is by photographs. So get back to skip back to the screen there. So apparently there now, there's some concern about, I guess, at least from some property owners. And there's a couple of letters we also attached from residents in that one particular neighborhood that came in since our last meeting. So we need to focus, I guess, on whether or not you feel that the ordinance that's recommended by the planning commission and the architectural advisory committee meets the intent of council in addressing architectural compatibility? Or should it be exempt from architectural compatibility as it's been practiced primarily for up until this point?
I kind of feel the same way Craig did at first when he mentioned that some of these look fine to me, really. I mean, I, where, who decides what's compatible and what's not? If you don't see it, an obvious difference, like a few, just a couple of those were really obvious to me.
And here's the thing is, I, I think that the way that we're trying to do our ordinance that the planning commission recommended, I don't think it has enough teeth in it to really, I mean, if you look at it, has everybody looked at all these other ordinances?
A little bit, Craig, pretty much.
I mean, they're a lot more strict than what we have. I, I just, I mean, we need to come in there and I don't know if, if, if us as a council need to get two or three hours to form a committee, get with Bill, try to word something out, I don't know what we need to do, but, but you know, we need to do something on height. We need to, you know, compatibility, better compatibility, all that stuff. I mean, if you don't, it's like, it's like what really got this stirred up was you got that 2,500 square foot house over in Bay Point and they're wanting to put an 1,800 square foot pole barn, not a two-car garage, but a pole barn.
It's tall.
And that's not compatible. And if we go and do the, what Bill's recommending, then yeah, they'll be able to do that. And that's why I think
Sorry, maybe we need to look, I'm just gonna come up with an example. Let's say you got a 3,000 square foot house. No buildings should exceed one-third of that, which would be a thousand square feet. And I'm not seeing us the figures we would go by, but it might be a formula that would work.
Well, that's what, Steve, if you look at some, if you look at some of these in here, that they're, they're kind of like that. They have a restriction on, you know, what size it can be. And anything, you know, over 150 square feet or 200 square feet has to go, you know, has to get a permit. Has to go to planning, whatever, but you know, we, we do, we need to take a look at that, really.
May I weigh in?
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. The, the challenge with this, then, because I've talked to Bill a lot about this, I've talked to a lot of other people about this. The challenge is, is that this isn't just about one subdivision, it's about the entirety of the city. And so when you play a percentage of a size of a house, there's a lot of thousand square foot houses in here. Those houses shouldn't necessarily be limited to a 333 square foot storage facility because they may well need it more and may actually be on a larger lot than, you know, some of the larger homes. And I think they should have that opportunity. The compatibility standards are also challenging based on the different areas of town, how the homes are constructed and what may be compatible with those homes. The concern that our planning, our planners have at this point is that we consider accessory structures and primary structures together. We do have the option where we can look at just the accessory structures. I think a lot of people are seeing this and they're thinking there are no standards on the accessory structures where in fact there actually are. It's just not necessarily the ones that, you know, one certain subdivision was looking for. But we have to real, one, we have to worry about homes in all the districts of Galton and what may adversely affect one, but not the other. Because what we wanted to do from the very beginning, because of the way that this thing happened, was remove the subjectivity and make it objective measures. So my suggestion would be that you all determine you want a height restriction. Do you want a size at which they must go through planning and at a size at which they must be compatible? I don't think you want to do that at 100 square feet, but maybe you want to do it at 200 or 300 or 400. I think 200 requires a building permit. Obviously, they have to follow setbacks. What are some of the other potential objective standards that we discussed, Bill? You took notes, Mary and I did, I'm sure.
Materials, the roof lines, the massing, the scale, the same types of things that are identified for those properties that are not exempt on, on section 1308 subsection B. So there's proportion of openings, roof types, again glazed openings, whatever degree of detail is what's the term used in our code. And I'm not sure what that is, that could be a lot of things, but
But, I mean, just as an example, some areas of town that could actually denigrate the property because say you've got someone that's living in, I don't know, one of the old, I don't know what you call it, the old, you know, shingled houses that you can't build anymore. And you tell them that their accessory structure has to be compatible with their existing house. Yet right next to that property, there's been a tear down and a rebuild of a really nice brick house. But then this people, these people who haven't rebuilt their house, want to put a nice accessory structure in, but they have to put something in that's consistent with their primary structure. So there's conflicts that can happen. You know, it's a challenge that a city like ours has because we span 200 years. A lot of these cities that have these other ordinances, they don't span that length of period of time. So, you know, we still have areas in Galton where we have manufactured housing that is on one lot next to a really nice house on another lot. Well, what does the manufactured housing put in as an accessory building that's consistent with their property? So, so those are the challenges that exist and that's why I'm saying there are a few things that I think you can look at. But you, I think you have to remove the subjectivity piece.
How would this fit in with a, a neighborhood that's got a they got standard rules for like a neighborhood? Yeah, home association.
Well, the, the homeowner association is the great thing and that's why, I mean, for these situations.
So this would not apply to that?
No, because they have their own covenants and even subdivisions that don't have HOAs may have covenants. The situation that we got into on this property that has kind of spawned all this is that that neighborhood had let their covenants expire, which then opened the door for people to come in there and, and do what they want to do. And I will say that I know in my own experience from selling homes, there are people that seek out neighborhoods that have the expired covenants because they know they can come in there and build whatever they want to. I mean, that is, I, I mean, I've had people call and say, are there any covenants in existence where this house is listed? And, and they, and there are some people that do want it, but there are also people that do not want it because they want the freedom to do what they want to on their property. Now, in a perfect world, people would be great neighbors and would not build things that would offend their neighbors. But it's not happening that way and here we are.
I know on the corner of Anthony and Chamber Street, they demolished our old house and built a house twice as big and the whole lot is filled.
My point is that, you know, we could, we could take some of the great points of each one of these other cities and put together an ordinance. Why could we not do that? I mean, and, and I think you're wrong, Paige, it doesn't matter if you got a thousand square foot home, you don't need to have a thousand square foot structure beside it, you don't need to.
You might if you want to park two cars in it, I mean, think about it.
Or a boat.
Or a boat, I mean, a, a, and say it's sitting on, you know, a larger lot. I mean, I just think you don't want to, you know, like I said, that's the very size home that may need larger storage.
That's just my thinking on it, I think.
I don't think a percentage of the size of the primary structure is a good guide. I do think that, you know, if you had overall limits, that would be fine, perhaps overhaul limits on height or overall limits on size of a building unless it's on certain acreage. You see that in a lot of the different ordinances that people have, like on this size lot, you can have this size structure and this size lot, you can have this size structure. And I think that gives more opportunity for people in different situations, whether it be, you know, age of the neighborhood or economic or whatever. I think that's probably the better path to go in my mind.
So, so I think you mentioned last time, maybe having a designer review committee or something on these subdivisions that doesn't have a homeowner association, is that something we need to look at?
I don't think we do, I think the neighborhoods need to because I think, you know, that's really stepping on some territory. If you're one of those people that has bought a home because there aren't covenants. I mean, I think it would be up to the individual neighborhoods to create those
Yeah.
Those covenants or even committees if they so desired. I mean, they could, they could, you know, just like the historic district did, create their own OLA if they can get their neighbors in agreement.
That'd be hard to do if they wanted to reestablish HOA.
It would, because you've got to get like 90% of the people to agree to.
Do it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, what's, what's, what's the rest of the council think? I mean, I think, I think we need to make it a little bit stronger than what it is, a lot stronger, really, to be honest.
I agree with Craig on that, I think it needs to be stronger. I think that we probably need to look at the size of lots and come up with our own formula and I don't know what that formula is going to be. But I think some people can get together and try to come up with something, then we can chew it apart if we need to.
Maybe we need to go back to what Mr. Hayes was talking about a moment ago, maybe we need to form a committee of people that would, you know, view all these other cities along with what we had and see if we can jerk it a little bit to make it better, I don't know.
We had that trying to do that, right?
Oh, we already had a committee doing that?
If that's where this recommendation came from, I would ask him, Mr. McCord, do you think that that same committee that we would, would be willing to reconvene and consider the concerns of this council?
Who was the committee?
Yeah, any councilman on that committee?
Who was the committee?
Matt Harris was one of them, I don't know the rest of them, Bill McCord could tell you.
The committee members appointed by the mayor consisted of Matt Harris, who is the vice chair of the planning commission and a local builder. Roger Matchit, who is an art, longtime architect that's been in town. And Mr. Montgomery, Rob Montgomery, who is a structural engineer.
Well, why don't we throw some suggestions like Craig was saying at them and let them also look over some of this, the other cities of what they're doing and maybe they can try to give us something we can live with a little bit better.
Could we not have a councilman on that committee?
I mean, I think, I think we need to have a council member too, and, and I'm looking at, I don't, all those people, I don't, I mean, I know where most of them live, but I don't think any of those, I mean, we need to spread it out a little bit.
Craig, I'm, I'm in, of course, I'm in HOA and I, you probably are too, but you live close over there. I'd like to nominate you to sit on that committee.
No, I don't mind, I mean, I really don't.
I agree, I agree. Do we need to get one or two?
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet because we need to figure out if this committee is willing to continue to work on this. I mean, they worked for several months doing just the things that you asked that they do. And Bill, do you have a sense of what they might do? I think we should ask them and then, you know, ask them if they would continue to work on it.
We gave them this book here, virtually. This is a book of design standards, architectural compatibility provisions from communities, including Collierville, all of these, many of these communities, Goodlettsville, almost all of these communities, they, they had that material and they had all that material with them, so.
It's silly, Bill didn't want to get them together and so, I mean, let's just
I'm glad to get them together, I, I, I can't speak for them though.
Well, let's just get another committee, let's just get another committee together then. Start from scratch.
Call them up, well, I mean, call them up, I, I know Matt Harris, I mean, he's willing to do it again. But as far as address the issues that we're concerned about, maybe tweak it a little bit.
I still feel like you should have a councilman on there as well.
Craig on there.
I agree.
If I could, if I could speak for just a moment, we are, sounds like you're, we're gonna really come up with a whole new we're not just really amending this now, this is going to be a new zoning ordinance. So this will go back through planning commission before it comes here. By state law, we'll have to go back through the planning commission for them to make a recommendation for it to come back here. I just want to let everyone be aware of that.
So there's no need to form a committee, is that what you're saying?
No, I think what you're saying is if we do form a committee and come up with something, it's going to be a new ordinance that'll have to go to planning commission and come back to us.
That's okay.
I figured that.
We definitely need Craig or somebody on there to go ahead and put, have some input into it before we waste a lot of time and come up with something that we're right back where we're at now.
Well, if Mr. Hayes is willing, I think he'd definitely be a dear person to have, I added on to that.
I don't mind doing it at all, but to be honest with y'all, I don't, I didn't know that they had a committee together doing this, did any of y'all?
I didn't.
I didn't.
It was advertised, it was advertised and it was on our website.
Okay, but I mean, I, I don't think anybody brought it to the city council that they were doing this, I mean, that, that's what I'm saying.
The only thing I can say is I was the only one that voted against it on the planning commission.
So what's the will of the body, where do we go from here, I guess?
Can we see if we can get the committee back together and I don't mind being a council representative on there to do that, to look at it.
Can we do that, Mr. McCord, what, what's your input on this?
We certainly can ask them, although it'd probably be best if we had an odd number of bearers on the committee.
Let's put one more councilman on this, Linda Love on there, represent her area.
Linda?
Well, you, you can, mine, mine is, well, a lot of mine is historic district, which already has
I think you would serve well on there, Linda. I can motion for Linda Love on there.
Thank you.
Is that a yes, Mrs. Love?
Well, I'm not really very knowledgeable about these kind of things, but I mean, I, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, but since you retired, you can go through that, we read through that book.
You're gonna be there soon, Tim.
Most meetings will be, have, have to be advertised and, you know, held, so I don't know how quick they can get them going, but
Let's try to, Bill, if you don't mind, try to talk to them before next meeting next Tuesday and see if they're willing to do that, okay?
Except two more members, is that what you're saying, Craig?
Yeah.
Got there, Mr. McCord?
Yes, sir.
Just tell them we're at an impasse.
So I guess what we do, defer this till later, to the next work session?
Yes.
I don't think you'll be able to do it by the next work session, John Dean.
Okay, so
We can at least have an update or something.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we gotta put something down, we deferred it for what? I mean, don't
Second time, yeah.
Well, you know, having to go back through the planning commission, that's going to delay it a couple of months.
March.
But I, I guess what I'm, I'm asking, out of number eight, we're going to defer that, right?
Yes.
There've been a motion about Mr. Hayes to defer, is there a second?
Yes.
A second by Mr. Overton, roll call please to defer number eight.
It's Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
He's gone off the screen.
Okay, six eyes, zero nays.
It concludes the agenda for the evening, or the other business from any other council members.
John D, I got just a couple of things if I could.
Yes, Mr. Overton.
First of all, Mr. Mark, Mr. Frank, at the first of the meeting, talked about the blasting, you know, there's a, I just want to let him know that there's a form and a complaint form that he can fill out in the building codes department and they'll track that for him. So if he didn't know that, he needs to call the building code department, there's a form they can fill out so he can track that, they'll, they'll track that. So, second of all, the chamber of commerce is hosting a turkey shoot this Saturday. I encourage everybody to bring the gun out, the mayor might be there. I don't know if she's gonna shoot or not, but maybe she will, but bring your guns out and we'll shoot some turkeys.
Oh, you're shooting targets, you're shooting targets.
Targets, I'm just kidding. You know, Madam Mayor, I've got a little shotgun specially for you, it's a ten gang. You know, Madam Mayor, I've got a little shotgun specially for you, it's a ten-gauge. Come out, Mayor.
I can shoot a gun, I'm not very good at hitting the target, but I can shoot a gun, thank you very much.
Any other, any other council members have anything?
I've got one thing I'd like to ask, uh, Zach Wilkinson, if he's online.
Mr. Wilkinson, are you there? Zach Wilkinson, are you there?
Yeah.
Call it later, it don't matter. Hey, Zach, did you, uh, follow up, I, I got a text from him, I've been out of state with, uh, Daryl Stewart as far as Gracie Lake over there. And trying to work out some type of a solution or remedy?
Yes, sir, uh, we have a meeting Friday morning with, uh, Mr. Stewart and some of the other homeowners, and then representative from the HOA is supposed to be there as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other council members?
Councilman Alexander, I have something.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we need to address the lady that called at the beginning of the meeting, um, the woman who called on behalf of the bank's property. I think, um, if you want to consider moving that forward, um, to give them more time, um, we probably need to add it to next week's agenda. Um, Ms. McColl, you may wanna advise exactly what we need to.
Yes, that would be my recommendation, that's what I was going to.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we'll put it on next week's agenda.
There's been a motion ma- made by Mr. Overton and second by Ms. Love, any question or comments? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchum, any other department head, I mean, I'm sorry, any other council member?
I think we might mention that, uh, send our consult condolences out to former councilman Eddie Mayberry on the death of his father yesterday.
Definitely, yes, certainly want to include him in our press, definitely.
Do we have something in the city that we can send some flowers over there, on behalf of, uh, department heads of the city council or the mayors?
We're, we, we almost always manage to do that, we might slip up once in a while, but generally we do.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any other department, any other council member?
Uh, Jeff Mitchell, Mr. Brown has raised his hand.
Okay, now we're ready for the department heads, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Hold on one second. Go ahead, sir. You may have to hit star six to unmute your phone.
Yes, this is David Brown with the Galton Park Department. We got some good news Friday, and on your desk or through the email, you received an ordinance today about the indoor swimming pool at the Civic Center.
Alright.
Just to give you an update, what, what the process was, we bid this project out, the best bid was three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Friday, the insurance has said they will fund three-hundred-and-eleven thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars of that, leaving the balance of sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one. That we will try to work that out of our budget, we had some employees that we didn't hire, one full-timer that we have not hired yet. So we're thinking we can work that into our budget with no additional funds. We have contacted Paddock Pool in North Carolina, the, actually the people that, uh, constructed the pool when it was originally built. So we are asking them to send us their contract and everything, we'll get that to Susan, and, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Rachel for helping us with the ordinance today, I know it was real quick, and I know she's very busy, but we really thank her for that. So that's where we stand, I know the next question you're gonna ask me is when they're gonna start and when it will be, since. I have no idea, as soon as we get their contract, get it signed and everything, I'm hoping they'll come and start on this thing and get, get it back open.
Would it be good for them to go ahead and have this council vote for it to be on next week's council meeting?
Yeah.
Motion to approve it?
Yes.
Been a motion by Mr. Overton, a second by Mr. Hayes, to put it on the next work session, or, or what?
Council.
Council meeting.
Council.
Alright, roll call.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
He, he just said yes, I saw his lips move.
I didn't hear him, Councilman Hayes, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Got you. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
And Councilman Fan, he's gone, so six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchum, anything else from any department head?
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, me.
Yeah, I'd like to share with, uh, council and give an update on the open superintendent of public utilities position. Uh, the posting closes November thirteenth, uh, I have gotten a panel established, and I emailed you guys the list of who that is this morning, so you should have received that. Um, at this time, we have received approximately, uh, thirty applications or resumes, and then we are looking to do interviews on December first.
Okay. Any comment, any question?
Are those the interviews for all thirty, or is that the ones?
No, they'll, it'll be narrowed down to, uh, of the finalists.
That's the ones we're involved with.
Correct.
That is.
So you're sending thirty people to apply?
Yes.
Apart.
Okay. Any other department head?
Bill McCord has something.
Yes, I have a few items I'd like to present you with, we're asking for, uh, on behalf of the American Legion, uh. To, for the council to waive the sign variance application that they are going to be presenting to us. They wanna, uh, make some changes to their sign on their property on, like, uh, South Water Avenue. So, uh, they're asking for a waiver of the variance application, they came to the city, uh, I can't remember how long ago, it's been some time ago. Asking for information about the, the sign code, and then they went and, uh. Had a fundraiser and raised a certain amount of money to, uh, erect an electronic sign. And when we, they came back to and talked to us, we had discovered that they intended to just add an electronic sign to their existing sign. Uh, which is a non-conforming sign, and the way the code was changed a few years ago, when we allowed electronic signs. Is that if someone wanted an electronic sign, they had to comply with the code, well, that, their intent was not to, uh, remove their existing sign, just to add to it and replace an existing sign. So, uh, staff members at that time had talked to the American Legion when they first came in. And told them that they would be able to submit that permit, so there was a misunderstanding as to what the actual code was. So, uh, I told them that I would, uh, come to the council and ask them at least to consider a waiver of their variance application.
Will of the body?
Application fee.
To approve?
Wait, you, you said you approved Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I do.
Ms. Love, second, okay, roll call.
Does that need to come in the form of a resolution next week to the council, Ms. McCollie? I think that would be, that would be best, um, just so that we have a record of it, I don't know if we've done this in the past. I don't know, Mr. McCord, if you've done this in the past and what the precedent has been.
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, as a matter of fact, Zach, uh, asked for a waiver of, uh, plan review fees for an expansion they did out at the Public Works Building. I think we've done it for.
Habitat, maybe?
I think Engineering Building had it also, the engineer.
Have we done it for Habitat for Humanity, I know we have utilities, but anything in planning or?
Uh, I, you know, I'd have to go check and find out, uh, I can't recall.
I know that when GPU brings that through, they always bring it through, through council.
Okay, we can prepare a resolution and have it for you next week.
Okay, alright, there was a motion, a second, we, we don't vote on it too, right?
No, you haven't yet.
Oh, okay, roll call vote, please, oh, I hit something.
I did not, I had some audio issues during that, I did not get to whoever made the motion in the second.
Uh, I made the motion.
Mr. Hayes made the motion, and I think Ms. Love seconded it.
Love seconded it.
Okay, thank you, now, Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you.
Another item I wanted to remind the, uh, council about is on Thursday night, which is two nights from now, on the twelfth. The county is having a public meeting on their master recreation plan that they're preparing. That meeting will be at the Station Camp Middle School at five-thirty, again, that's on Thursday, the twelfth, at five-thirty at Station Camp Middle School. Also, uh, want to, uh, mention that, and I think you all had mentioned it before. That on the eighteenth, we're gonna have a joint planning commission and council meeting, uh, just on the comp plan and where we are on that. We're gonna be focusing on the character areas, which is the land use, which is an extremely important component of the master plan or zoning or, or comp plan. So I wanna, uh, again, uh, remind you of that, that'll be at five o'clock, uh, it'll be virtually, of course, on the eighteenth, next Wednesday. And also, uh, somewhat related to that, after that meeting, we're gonna be scheduling, the planning staff is gonna be scheduling meetings individually with each council member. To talk about specifics of how the comp plan is developing, get your feedback, uh, individually, of course. On where we are, your concerns, uh, particularly after the, uh, meeting on the character areas. So that's all I have tonight.
Any, any other department head? You are, you have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion, a second.
Yeah.
Goodbye. I, um.
Sean reminds me of the Blair Witch Project with that, walking around like.
Well, it's getting real windy here, and everybody's sitting inside.
Don't, don't y'all forget to keep, keep missing New, uh, uh, Mayberry in your prayers.
That's right, thank you.